If I could, everybody's attention like to call the meeting Monday, June nineteenth. The Munster Town Council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Present.
Councillor Mellon.
Present.
Councillor Tulowitzki. Councillor Kulturitis and Councillor Gardner.
Present. As we rise tonight for a moment of silence, I'd like to make sure that every in there has some time for reflection and remembrance of the national holiday today, June nineteenth, and the importance that it has in our society. We can all rise for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the proud and flourishing stand one nation under God, equal to this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Hello, Steve. At this time, we come to the public comment section of the meeting. We kindly ask that all in person public comment is limited to two minutes, maximum per person or five minutes per group spokesman. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. In the event that questions are posed to the council, you will note your question in the meeting minutes and we will refer to questions to the appropriate department or staff for follow. Public comment may also be submitted electronically. If you have questions or comments that you'd like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email that question before the council meeting to Dustin Anderson or Tom Manager at danderson@munster.org. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council during the public comment section? Then if you can come up to the lectern and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Julie Graff. I live at eighty-eight oh five Meadow Lane. I live directly across the park from Juannus Park. I've lived in my home for twenty-five years. I've always thought Juannus Park as basically a neighborhood playground, not a destination park, as we don't have a parking lot. Lots of people in the neighborhood walk, have their wagons, bring their kids. We have increasingly more and more people driving to the park. People park in front of my house, they throw trash on the parkway, they block my driveway. In front of the park, it's yellowed with no parking for the safety of the children, and often we have people parking there. Just about every morning, there's garbage out all over the park. I've cleaned up smashed bottles and things. I have a dog, and I don't want him to step in that or any other dog or people, anybody. And a lot of times it's people from Illinois, and that's a hot button with people in my neighborhood. So this past weekend, we had a party in the park that kind of checked all the boxes. I was in my backyard watering, I came up front. There were four vehicles parked on the double yellows in the no park. They all had Illinois places, I say, which is people only able to get upset about that. They had overtaken the whole park so that kids had come to have a ballgame and were sent away grilling, drinking. And it was just, and like I say, you're bringing your children to the park, you're parked on the double yellows. That's a no park to keep all the children safe, including your own. So I did call the police. They came, the people moved off the yellows, people were still in the park. The next morning, there were hamburgers, chicken, things were all over the park. I cleaned it up. And I came here this evening because I guess while I understand that there's no alcohol or open flame allowed in a park in Munster unless you go where there are grills and pavilions provided, I'd like to request the sign be put up stating no alcohol or open flame at our park. I also think that myself and a lot of people in my block, but nobody else is here this evening, would like residential parking signs only on our street. Thank you for your time.
We thank you for your comments, and we will pass that along to the appropriate departments, especially the police department and the park department. Thank you very much. Anybody else that would like to speak to the council with regards to public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section and move into the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move to accept the consent agenda.
There is a motion. Is there a second? A second. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion with regards to the consent agenda? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. There is no old business. We'll move into the new business section. First thing on the agenda is the twenty-twenty-four budget calendar. That is a memo from Clerk Treasurer Wendy Miss. Anything to add to the memo?
Nothing to add to the memo. Just please add these dates to your calendar. They are statutorily required, and we generally need it a little bit before. We have some wiggle room, so if you know you can't attend, please let us know sooner than later.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there is nothing that we need to approve during that. This is just a for your information to the council, the important dates. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, this is the capital asset policy revision. Again, another memo from Clerk Treasurer Wendy Miss. Anything to add?
Nothing to add, just that this is updating our policy that was quite old, and what we are doing is raising the threshold from five thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars, as discussed previously, for five thousand dollars that can cover repairs, and it's not broad enough to cover significant asset acquisition. This was a recommendation. We have another party, Peterson Consulting of Laguardia, Illinois, and they recommended this increase. So we're respectfully asking council to approve the revisions to our capital asset policy.
Mr. President, I move to approve the capital asset policy revision dated June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to letter C, signed mediation agreement. Attorney Westland, anything to add to this? And if you can just clarify what we're, what our motion should be?
It would be a motion to ratify the agreement. I think that we talked about at the study session. Individual fell in a hole that was caused or allegedly caused, I should say, by a sewer that was next to it right here in the park on July third.
Very good. Thank you. We're looking for a motion to ratify the mediation settlement agreement that's before the council. We'll move. There's a motion. Is there a second? A second. Very good. Motion, a second by Councillor Tulowitzki. Any discussion?
Understand as properly, the insurance company will pay three hundred thousand. The town has paid ten thousand.
Not our insurance. That, that's the insurance for the Veterans Memorial. Is paying.
Right.
Okay. Answer your questions.
Yeah, we're not paying three hundred thousand.
Right.
We're paying ten.
Very good. There is a motion, a second. Any further discussion? No, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is another settlement agreement. Again, Attorney Westland, anything to add to this?
No, this is an employee injury, and a workman's complaint was filed, and we were able to negotiate this.
So again, looking, a red, a motion to ratify this settlement agreement.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the compromise, the compromise agreement as presented.
Very good. There's a motion. I'll second. I'll give this one, Councillor Schoen.
Was the word, did the word ratify need to be in the motion?
Oh, yeah, yes.
I just say, move that we ratify and approve the compromise agreement as presented.
Motion by Councillor Mellon, seconded by Councillor Schoen. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to ordinance nineteen oh five, this is amending the Lake Business Center for Planned Unit Development. Town Manager Dustin Anderson would like to add anything to your memo that's before the council?
No, but for the benefit of those online in the audience, this is a second amendment to the Lake Business Center Planned Unit Development ordinance. Last year, the Plan Commission and Town Council amended the ordinance to create a program of signs. It's a lot of signs, and the applicant did not include their two monument signs at Franlin and Braden Way. They realized this oversight, it's no big deal. They went to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission favorably recommends to you that you include those two signs and their signage plan, and the variations of the signs that they would like are laid forth in the ordinance and the supporting documents. It's a, it's a good-looking sign, individualized backlit channel letters. What we're asking for you to do tonight is consider adopting this. It only requires a single reading. So at your pleasure, be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President, I move that we approve ordinance nineteen oh five, amending the Lake Business Center Planning and Development to revise the site sign management like this Business Center BUD ninety-two hundred.
I was second. Very good. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion regarding the ordinance nineteen oh five?
Just mentioned from the Plan Commission, we've seen this ordinance come through, another ordinance, but we've seen these signage plans come through, and actually a number of things from the new tenant or new owner of the Lake, parts of the Lake Business Center, also is very professional. And as I drive by, I'm wondering when these signs are going to be updated. So I think it's a good ordinance.
Very good. Thank you. See, no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Then we move on to letter F, ordinance nineteen oh six. This is surplus bond proceeds memo from Clerk Treasurer Wendy Miss. Clerk Treasurer, anything to add?
Nothing to add, just that this is an important piece of financial housing, if you will. We have a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth plus of bond proceeds that were projects that were either completed under budget, not completed, or abandoned, or I don't know what my third law was going to be. So we
Otherwise unspent.
Otherwise unspent funds, exactly. And so we would like to take this, this fund, these funds, and put them back into, go against debt service, and that'll reduce the amount of property taxes that will be asked, we asked for in twenty twenty-four. And so it will have maybe dividends, but it will have an impact on our net upfront taxes. So in this case, we are recommending so that we can get this into our debt service before the end of June, which is the six-month cutoff, and we have debt service payments. We can get this moved into the correct fund by the end of this month. We're requesting that you please waive the, suspend the rules and waive the readings and pass this on one read.
And there, Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules and waive this. I'll second. There's a motion, a second for the motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then I move that we adopt ordinance nineteen oh six on first reading as presented.
I'll second that as well. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion on that motion?
That shouldn't be called a third.
We just, we appreciate it, and deliberately helped us to present tonight so that we had, everybody had the proper opportunity to spend in saying, add that one thirty, one thirty.
Question, just kind of general curiosity, there was a term in your, wait a minute, second sentence, the bonds are replaced by ad valorem property taxes. What, what is that?
Property taxes? I think that's. Who's Abbott? Controller Abbott, our, our Latin expert?
Yeah.
Can go that far. It's the, they're your gen, what you think of as your general property tax as opposed to a special district property tax or a different type.
Or reselling.
It's, it's just your standard everyday property tax. That's how it's worded in the statute that most of us.
Start referring to things in my home as ad valorem.
Please. Word of the day.
Very good. I see no further discussion on this item. Roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is Public Works, the purchase of a new Z-Track mower in the street division. Sometimes that Director of Public Works, Steve Gunt, he's on the line, is he on the line today?
He is, if you have any questions for him.
His memo is relatively self-explanatory. Is there a motion from the council, or there's a recommendation from the council?
Mr. President, I move to approve the purchase from Castonia Tractor of a new twenty-twenty-three John Deere Z nine three zero M for a net total price after trading of nine thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-one cents.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, a second. Any questions for Director of Public Works, Steve Gunt? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
All right.
And finally, on letter H, this is Resolution twenty-one fifteen, interlocal agreement for nervcy and EVP. It's the implementation of an emergency vehicle preemptive system. We want memos from Clerk Treasurer Wendy Miss. Anything to add to the memo?
Nothing really to add to the memo. There is a scriptener's error that in the Munster section, it says that Munster has thirty intersections and fifteen police vehicles and twenty-eight fire vehicles. That should be flipped. That should be fifteen fire vehicles and twenty-eight police. So I'd like to make that, make you aware of that. This is leading up to some funding that'll be available in twenty-six and twenty-eight. We have learned through Nervcy that there's the possibility we can get some of the funding earlier if they're not spent by someone else. So that's why we're giving all these ducks in a row, if you will. By our calculations, the maximum the town of Munster will spend is two hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. We don't expect the project to cost us that much, but it's a work in progress. That's the maximum. We're putting them in this amount not to exceed. And the project is to, it's the preemptive lights and traffic on the traffic lights so that ambulance, it's a fire, the police can go through and the other traffic will stop. So we're excited about this opportunity. It's a six-point-four million dollar grant, and it's multi-jurisdictional. So it's a great project, and I hope that council will support moving forward with it.
There are two items for the council to consider. Mark Haywood here also, who's been pretty much instrumental in putting together this process. And I think Mark would be happy to answer any questions if we do have them during, as we make motions of that using things. The first motion is
I'm glad you clarified the twenty-eight fire vehicles. So the garage system was that big?
No.
Actually, PD called me on that and said, what? We have more cars than that. Yes, you're right. So.
Mr. President, I would move to adopt resolution two-one-one-five as presented with the change in the vehicle counts as noted.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Then we have the interlocal agreement to consider.
Mr. President, I agree to adopt the interlocal governmental agreement by, by in between the town of Munster in Indiana, the town of Highland in Indiana, the city of Hammond, Indiana, the town of St. John, Indiana, the city of Gary, Indiana, and Lake County, Indiana.
I'll second. The motion is second. Any discussion? Our chief five, who can anything to add? I want to give you your chance. We're tired of this all.
So just a little history, we have an optometrist system in place. We were the first ones around the area to get that set. It's about thirty years old. We're getting, we're way past life expectancy. We can't keep close. Where the system has gone now, that system was line of sight, light emitting. The new system is GPS, and it's smart GPS. So for event, you're going southbound on Cape Cod, you're getting close to Franlin, fire truck, ambulance, or police car turns on your left turn signal, it will start manipulating light at Columbia, right? It calculates your speed on the traffic duty cycle of the lights up to fifty miles an hour. So the intersection should be clear by the time that we get there. And again, we don't have to worry about line of sight, trees, the adjustment of the signal heads, the turn light on Franlin between Columbia and all. Some of the communities around have got the system already. That's why it's not all-inclusive to Lake County. They kind of did their own grant process. We're just trying to get up to date, make things safer.
Very good.
And be collaborative with the communities touching us.
So the design of these systems actually is to try and clear out traffic before.
Yes.
Before the
So if you seen our lights now, you'll see the white light, right? The white light on constant means that's where green light should be, and the flashing ones are red. Again, it's old technology. It was good when it first came out, but now we've increased traffic a lot since then. The new system helps alleviate that traffic and
And of the intersections in, included, I'm imagining the, all the bridge road intersections.
Every intersection that is controlled by a light, right, will have this.
And people can no longer have a strobe light to track the system.
A strobe light doesn't quite work. We have
There are certain devices.
Yeah, we have got. But yeah, you can't do that anymore. With this also, me and the police chief will have the ability to check on our vehicles, check their speed going through there. This gives us line data also.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good, chief.
Very proud of you.
Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. That concludes the new business. Are there any reports or portfolio reports that the council would like to provide?
It's like, I guess, sort of reports or comments.
Sure.
Just to remind, right, today is June nineteenth, which is Juneteenth. Back in twenty-twenty-one, we had passed a proclamation on the heels of the federal government, like, on Juneteenth as a, as a federal national holiday. And subsequent to that, there was a slight change to the ordinances, which makes today one of the days in the town of Munster where it's approved to celebrate Emancipation and Freedom Acts with fireworks, as are ten days or five days before and after the Fourth of July fireworks. And then maybe until one AM on New Year's Eve through to New Year's Day. So just wanted to commemorate and recognize that we have that possibility in town of Munster to celebrate this relative. It's, it's from eighteen sixty-three, actually nineteen sixty-five, was word passed down in Texas that emancipation had happened. So while it's been something to be celebrated for a long time, we look at this here. Third year in Congress. It's not, not quite an update on the solid reason.
Or we could make that an announcement. So, all good. Anything else under reports? Any other announcements to make?
Mr. President, I'm sorry. I was just going to clarify that the next meeting is on June sixth. That is not a special meeting. It was probably advertised at the beginning of the year. So it's not special. It's, it's different, but not, nothing special.
It's just, and hold on. And the reason for that is that July fourth, or third, third is a one that is the fireworks night. We have fireworks on July third and the Friday, July fourth issue.
We answered in advance.
Councillor Mellon, you were going to say something?
I just wanted to make a comment about the resident who spoke earlier. I see that she has left the meeting, but it's, it's just, it's very concerning because this is just happening more and more. I mean, we get from just, also like this, I see people throwing trash out their windows, driving down Cunningham Avenue. I just, I'm wondering, I, I mentioned it to the police chief, that if we could look at a littering fine, put up signs possibly at these parks because it seems like we need to, we have to force people to follow the rules because they don't choose to do it. But maybe where there are the yellow stripes, maybe we actually need, like, objects so that you can't park there because it's, it's for the safety of the kids at the park. And so if you have someone or you have people breaking the rule constantly, every time they do, the children are in jeopardy. So instead of having to wait for a resident to get annoyed enough to call the police, you know, there's that, that's a big window at a time where someone could get hurt. So I just want to ask staff to take some proactive measures, look at, come with some suggestions for the council, because Munster's a nice place to live, it's a nice place to visit, until people start destroying it, and then it's not nice for anybody. So I feel very strongly about us monitoring and taking charge of this.
It's interesting that we have the exact same problem with Sunnyside Park. And the resident who spoke was quite accurate in this. These are not destination parks. There are no parking lots because we assume people will walk their neighborhood parks. So we assume people will walk to the park. But all of them, I mean, every park in the town is on a street. And on most of the parks, there are residential neighborhoods on the other side of the street, which means kids will cross the street to get to the park. And they may go to the park every day or once a month, who knows? But one of the things we discussed at Sunnyside Park, because it's a, it's a wide street, it's four lanes of traffic that the kids would have to cross through, is where the yellow, where the curb is painted yellow have a bump out, perhaps making arrangements so that it doesn't disrupt the drainage. So maybe there's a slight gap between the curb and the beginning of the bump out, so that it's impossible to park there. It does two things. It makes it impossible to park. So you, so drivers can see the kids, so the kids can see cars much easier, which is the reason why we have no parking signs next to every park. But it also means that the distance that a kid would have to take for an adult to cross the street is half. You're crossing, you know, on Holland Avenue, there'd be two lanes of traffic to cross instead of four. And I think it might be a good idea. We've, we've had, it's not, is it, the Juannus or Evergreen Park where we have the yellow flashing light on Timberick?
It's Juannus.
Evergreen is closer.
Right. It's the corner.
So it's Evergreen?
No, it's, it's the northern one.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we're, last meeting, we approved putting a light across from Sunnyside Park. So the drivers are at least aware of that, you know, there's a reason to slow down and pay attention.
If I could make a suggestion, tomorrow night is the park board meeting.
Yes.
And, and Councillor Schoen, you as liaison to the park board, you could just relay, I know Dustin will, will talk to, you know, park director Mark Heinz about this, but if you could also reiterate this to the park board tomorrow night, that, that we had this comment to the, to the council, they should be aware of this also.
Of the, of trash?
Yeah, of, of, of Ms. Ms. Graff's comments to the council tonight. If you could just pass those along to the park board meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sure they know because they're, they're the ones that have to clean it up. Unless she does a really good job and the department doesn't know that this was made.
It's likely that staff knows. It may not have percolated up to the park board.
Okay. I'll make sure that they're
Very good. We did make the announcement. Our next meeting is July sixth, and then we will have our following meeting, the second meeting on the third Monday in July. Seeing nothing else, entertain a motion for adjournment. Seeing nothing else, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. And then we will quickly move into our redevelopment commission regular meeting on June nineteenth. Roll call please.
Commissioner Schoon. Commissioner Mellon.
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki.
Present.
Commissioner Culturitis, Commissioner Gardner.
Yes, here, present. Are there any public comments? Anybody from the public that would like to speak to the redevelopment commission for tonight's meeting? Seeing no public interest in speaking with the council, we'll move into the consent agenda.
No, Abby's not here. So I'll move.
It's throwing everybody off tonight, I think.
I, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion with regards to the consent agenda for redevelopment commission? Seeing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Schoon.
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes. There is no old business, no new business, no reports, any announcements from the redevelopment commission. Seeing none, I entertain a motion for adjournment. So.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. If there are those members here from the Munster Civic Foundation, we will be meeting in practice room eight across the hall with the round tables. Thank you very much. You guys need, you guys need fiction or anything else? How can you guys get what you needed to get? And thanks.
Yeah.